Thank you ladies and gentlemen for tuning in to this exciting TV broadcast. We'll see you tomorrow, the day after that, and the day after that because that's the way we broadcast news and that's the way you consume entertainment. Won't change anytime soon. For the MIT TV, I'm Tim Meyer.
Tim Meyer.
You Tim Meyer.
I said Tim Meyer.
They said you were coming.
What they say true?
See for yourself.
What's this?
They call it a podcast studio.
The heck's a podcast studio?
It's a studio for podcasting. Superior sound visuals, allowing the viewer to either watch or listen for an intimate experience of long-form content.
Long-form content?
Without any restrictions from any cable or network provider, there's no telling how long it can be.
Is it affordable?
You have no idea.
What's he doing?
Found him here in the studio. Recent college graduate trying to start a podcast with his friends after debating the existence of God and women's sports.
How come I can't hear him?
Steven builds a spy on us through the intergalactic satellite system. Also buy my merch with my special creator code.
How long before this becomes accessible?
It already has.
If you or someone you know is looking to start a podcast for business or personal use, look no further than the MIT TV. With hourly rates starting as low as 160 an hour, the MIT TV grants access to state-of-the-art podcast studio, allowing you to record perfect audio, amazing video for your audience. Contact the MIT TV today at mit.tvpodcast@gmail.com.
This job stinks.
Yo, this is Kowalski with the MIT TV. How we doing?
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah.
How can I help you today?
Trying to watch the MIT TV.
That's awesome. Where are you trying to watch the MIT TV at?
On my TV.
Perfect. Let me break it down for you. Here at the MIT TV, we offer a whole slew of content, from community events, Romeo Community Schools, sports, and everyone's favorite, the Village of Romeo Board Meetings. Just find the YouTube app and in the search bar type @theMittTV. Once you find our channel, you can go to the videos tab for our entire catalog of videos.
What if I'm trying to watch something live?
It is so easy, you have no idea. Just click the live tab to find all previous and up-
Now we're there. Okay, it's seven o'clock according to Apple phone time. So first, we're going to start with our public hearings. Our first public hearing will be on our 25-26 millage rates for the Village of Romeo. I will take the time to read this here for us. Please be advised that on Wednesday, May 28th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, the Village of Romeo Board of Trustees will hold a public hearing at a special meeting held at the meeting room located at 361 Morton Street, Romeo, Michigan, 48065. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments oral or written on the proposed property tax millage rates to be levied in fiscal year 2025-2026. This fiscal year period runs from July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026. The property tax millage rate proposed to be levied to support the proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 budget will be a subject of this hearing. The meeting to take action on the millage rates will immediately, will follow immediately, the public hearing during the special meeting held by the Village of Romeo Board of Trustees. The mills to be levied for general operating, according to PA 3 of 1895, are 10.2076. Our rubbish fund, according to PA 3 of 1895, will be set at .7500. Our general highway fund, according to PA 3 of 1895, will be 1.4002. A cemetery, also of PA 3 of 1895, will be set at .3700. Our street improvement bond, which was voted on on November 8th of 2022, is set at 1.16198, giving us a total of 14.3476. If you are in the DDA District, the Downtown Development Authority, will be levied at 1.6391. Public hearing is open for any comments. Hearing none. We will close the public hearing for the millage rates. Next, we open the public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 budget for the Village of Romeo for the period of July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026. Again, please be advised that on Wednesday, May 28th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, the Village of Romeo Board of Trustees will hold a public hearing at a special meeting held at the meeting room located at 361 Morton Street, Romeo, Michigan, 48065. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments oral or written on the proposed budget for the Village of Romeo's fiscal year 2025-2026. The fiscal year period runs from July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026. The summary of the proposed budget for period July 1, 25 to June 30, 26. I don't, not going to read every single number here, guys. Public hearing for the budget is open if there are any comments oral or written. This has also been posted at Village Hall, in the newspaper, online, the website. Hearing none, we will close the public hearing for the budget. And move into our Board of Trustees' special meeting for May 28th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Let us all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Lucero, could you please call the role?
Bartholomew.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
Fowler.
Care.
Here.
Parker.
Posen.
Rosso.
Here.
President Posniewski.
Here.
Moving on to our approval of agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Support.
We have a motion by Care, support by Bartholomew. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have none opposed. Moving into our special presentation, this evening we have Mr. John Kaisor here to go over our proposed water sewer rates. I did ask him to come and explain it all as it is a, now that we have all the information from our CIP, we have a lot of data, tables and information, and I asked the professional to come explain it to us.
Thank you.
There we go. Good evening. Yes, President Posniewski asked me to come and speak about the rate study that we've updated and talk about the recommendations going forward. As we've been doing for the past few years, we look at your budget numbers, we look at your historical revenues and expenditures, we look at your capital plan, your debt, your customer base, your usage, and do the math to come up with what the rates need to be going forward. The one thing that is different this year is you do actually have a much better sense of what your capital needs are going forward. In the past, we've kind of said, you need to be investing something, so we factored some dollars into it, but we didn't have actual projects. So now that we have actual projects, we can do a much better job of figuring out what the rates need to be and how you're going to pay for those projects. So we are looking at forecasting revenues and expenditures. Again, as we've done in the past, the expenditures are line item forecasted based on best estimates of what they might be going forward. We do look at every customer bill for a year in terms of how much usage, what demand they have, size of meter, what they're paying for the ready-to-serv, so we have a solid base of what the customer base is. We also looked at your capital and how we're going to fund that, tried lots of different scenarios to keep the rates as low as possible and still have a plan that works. So we are looking at the total cost of the operations, water and sewer separately, trying to understand what those true costs are, and that is O&amp;M, replacement, maintenance, capital, and debt. Obviously, your water is coming primarily from Great Lakes Water Authority on the industrial park side, so there's a lot of costs there that you can't control, so we factor those in as well based on the rate letter that the Village gets every year from GLEWA. So those numbers are also factored into here. I mentioned the capital plan, we have those numbers in there based on priorities that were identified and trying to figure out how we're going to fund those, and I'll talk a lot more about capital soon. And then we look at the rates and come up with what the rates are based on what your customer basis is. So what we've noticed, looking back over the past six years, we've got an annual increase in operating costs, averaged 5.1% for water and about 1.3% for sewer. And that's just operating costs, that's not debt, capital, anything like that. Over the past six years, your capital investments have been insufficient, and I would argue that they've been insufficient for much longer than that, I just went back and looked at the last six years. But over those years, water investments have totaled $358,000 while depreciation has been $1.2 million. Best practice, according to the American Waterworks Association and Engineering, is that you're investing at least your depreciation amount in your system every year, on average. Obviously, there's going to be some years you're investing more and some years you're investing less. But on the water side, looking in past, over the past six, even I look back eight years on that one, there were a number of years where there was $0 spent on capital for the water system. On the sewer side, your investments totaled $586,000, but your depreciation was $2.2 million. So essentially, you are falling behind further and further every year on what you need to do. And as we know, when things wear out, if you can fix them before they're totally shot, it's cheaper than fixing and having to replace them entirely. We are at the point where your water and sewer systems combined are 64% depreciated, which means there's 36% value left in them, which is an accounting function, I'll admit, but it gives you a sense of where things are going. And looking back over the past few years, we just see that depreciation number increasing and the value decreasing. It's a clear indication that you need to start making investments in the capital, otherwise you're going to be doing costly emergency repairs. I tried to find a memo that another client of mine wrote to their counsel explaining the value of planning and taking care of capital needs proactively rather than reactively. They had a project that I think cost something to the tune of $500,000 when they had to do it in an emergency. They did a similar project two years later that was planned ahead, and it cost them $70,000. So you save a lot of money by planning and doing things proactively where you can get the resources together and move forward. Emergencies just cost a lot of money, so we're trying to prevent emergencies, which is why it's important to really start spending the money on investment. And I know nobody likes to spend money because it means you have to pay more money for the systems, but I can assure you, by not doing it, it will get even more expensive. And this is a health and safety issue that impacts your residents, your businesses here. It's really unfortunate to drive down Main Street, which I've seen in another community of mine where they talked about water loss on their system, and they said, is it really a big deal that we're losing 40% of our water and we can't account for it? Probably, and two weeks later, Main Street collapsed. So that's where all the water was going. So if they had taken the time to actually look ahead, they would have caught that and fixed it. So we're trying to avoid that, but we're also trying to make sure you've got the capacity and the ability to serve without sudden interruptions and having to call emergencies. So that's what we're trying to get to. So the tool that we're using continues to be the Waterworth or Muniworth financial forecasting tool, and that's what we use for setting the rates as well, figuring it all out. We're looking at the six-year period of your CIP, which goes through 2031. In the water side, we have $3 million of capital in that CIP, and on the sewer side it's $4.1 million. So as you can see, the past six years, you spent $368,000 on water, the next six years you're going to spend $3 million. Sewer, the same thing, you spent $500,000, and now you're going to spend $4 million. So we're turning around, which is good, and we're trying to minimize the impact on your customers as much as possible because that's obviously an issue and a concern. When we forecasted out all of the O&amp;M costs, operations and maintenance costs, it looks like on the water side, 2.7% average growth in costs, and that includes 5% from GLEWA, and on the sewer side it's about 2.5%. So those are just the standard operating, staffing, electricity, utilities, all that that you need to operate the system. The capital's on top of that, and like I said, $3 million for water, $4.1 million for sewer. What we tried to do is figure out how we can use debt strategically to not overburden the village with debt, but to also not overburden the rate payers on the rate side. So it's a balancing act, and we looked at lots of different ways of how much debt can we issue for various things. On the water side, given the cash in the fund at this point and the customers, we can probably get away with bonding about $1.85 million to pay for that $3 million in capital. The rest can be funded with cash and rates. On the water side, not so good. We have to bond almost all of it because you just don't have the liquidity there and the need is coming up faster than we can generate the revenue. When we do a study like this, what we try to do is, over time, get ahead of the need to issue debt. So if we were to presume that every six-year increment is going to look like what's needed now, $3 million on the water side, $4 million on the sewer side, adjusted for inflation, we're going to try to get our rates up slowly so that we can fund more and more with cash and rates as opposed to debt. Because obviously, if you're issuing debt, you're paying another 4% or so on top of that, which just makes it more expensive for everybody. We also recognize that these are assets that are going to be in the ground mostly, although the wastewater treatment plant, some of it will be above ground at the wellhouse, but these assets will last a long time. So most pipes that we're putting in the ground today are going to last 75 to 100 years. So it's not a bad thing to spread some of those costs to future users, but we don't want to get in the cycle of funding everything with debt. I've got some clients like that, and it's just so hard to get out of it. So again, a balancing act, how much debt we have, how much cash, we affect the rates as much as we can so that we keep it reasonable and get the work done. We also looked at your cash reserve targets, that's something we've been doing over the time, and I'll show the chart in a minute that talks about that, and then tested everything to make sure we can meet the reserve requirements. And then the last thing we like to do is smooth the rates. I don't like to present rates that are going up and down and up and down, I like a nice smooth rate trajectory. It just makes it more digestible, and people can plan better if they know what to expect next year approximately. I will say, having said that, rates always change because costs always change, so we do this every year so we can keep on top of it. We don't want to presume that the estimates we're making now are going to be valid two years from now because things change. So on this chart, if you can see it, that dotted red line going across the bottom there, that is the minimum cash balance that we want to have in this fund. This is the water fund. The dotted black line, that's a little harder to see because it's buried in the dark blue, that's kind of the target of cash that we're shooting for, trying to keep our cash up about that. The solid black line that's near the top, that's your current cash up through 2025, and then going forward from there is the forecasted cash. So as you can see, your water fund has a healthy cash balance, which means we can fund more things with cash and not have to bond as much. When we issue a bond, it would pay for several years of capital, and then we would spend that down, and we just keep things going. So right now, we're looking at a 2% increase on the water side for this coming year, and then about 3% for the next five years after that. And again, that could change based on actual costs. So it's not, it actually looks pretty healthy to me, and I'm feeling comfortable with where things are going. You'll also notice that over time, the cash balance slowly goes down and approaches that dotted black line. So we're trying to get to that and then smooth things out and just keep it going. It's nice to have a little extra cash, and the reasons are, A, liquidity. If a project comes in more than you expect, you need another $100,000, you can reach in, take it out of cash, and not have to go and bond for it. Another reason is having the option of leveraging the money for any potential matching grants that come along. So most communities are always looking for grant opportunities, and a lot of those grants come with a requirement that you contribute some percentage, usually around 20 to 30%. So if you have a million-dollar project and there's a grant becoming available, can you come up with $200,000? And on the water side, yes, you can, you can leverage that and take advantage of that grant. If you were cash poor, you wouldn't be able to do that. So again, this is what we're trying to do, is keep your cash at a healthy point where you can manage things and be proactive as much as you can. On the sewer side, things are a little bit different, and I just want to compare and contrast this, if you look at the green area that's behind the bars there on the top, that's the capital. So on the sewer side, we see this peaks and valleys over time. On the water side, we've got more of a big chunk, and then it peters off. So this is another thing that we're looking at, is how we're going to fund this type of capital investment versus one that's more peaks and valleys. So on the water side, or on the sewer side, rather, we're looking at two bond issues over time. Again, we're trying to keep the cash up but not go crazy on debt. If we get out to 2028 and a grant is available, you might not have to bond. So I don't want to take the debt out early and then end up not needing it. So again, strategy, trying to think through what we can do to keep the rates as low as possible. With this strategy, I'll point out that the cash balance, that black line, does a lot more bouncing up and down. Our goal is to keep the rates as smooth as possible. So on the sewer side, we're looking at a 5% increase this coming year, and then 5% a year after that. So in my world, I know that might seem a lot to some, but I'm talking with communities who are 8%, 15%, 20%, 30% are not unusual. So when I see 2% on the water and 5% on the sewer, I'm thinking that's a pretty good position to be in. And I know that's not always easy for people to digest, but it's where you're at. Things that can impact some of this, like I mentioned, grant opportunities as one. The other is your actual costs. You've got capital improvement plan that's trying to guess what rates will be or costs will be for capital five, six years out. I just had a client that they had in their CIP $11 million for a project, they bid it out, it came back at $19 million. So we can't predict what the actual costs are going to be, the engineers do their best to estimate, but it all depends on timing and material costs at the time that you bid it. The other things that could impact the sewer side, Bruce Township usage, their flows, obviously, the more they contribute, the revenue comes in, it reduces the cost to the village a little bit, and then overall for water and sewer, it's actual customer usage. And I know you've got the former Ford plant sitting out there waiting for development. They are paying the ready-to-serv costs for their portion of the system. So a lot of these costs are being shared by that large customer, even though they're not producing actual materials at the plant right now. So they are still connected to the water system and the sewer system, and they are still using a little bit of water, but they are contributing a significant amount towards the ready-to-serv, which reduces the cost for everybody else in the village. So going forward and looking at how we do this, the strategy that we are utilizing is meaningful annual adjustments to rates, and the village has been good about that. Just keep doing the rate increases. It's a lot better to do a 5% than to come back three years later and have to do a 25%. That's real stories talking. I know that if you forego a rate increase one year, you'll pay double or more the next year. So it's better to just do a little bit at a time. And then again, strategic utilization of debt, whenever you can pay cash, pay cash, but sometimes you're going to bond, take advantage of it. Depending on the project, you might take the time to apply for an SRF, or you might just go for open bond, market bonds. So next steps for the rates side, obviously, you need to adopt the budget and then adopt the rates that are sufficient to fund the budget, and that's what I just presented tonight. The president does have the actual rate schedule that will, they have that, okay. So you have the rate schedule there, and you'll see what the rates look like. If you adopt that, those would be the rates that would go into effect. Annually updating the capital plan, and I don't know if you've worked that into your budget cycle yet, but that is something that you need to keep doing. Passing a, approving a CIP one year and then not doing anything with it for six years, again, things change. Priorities change, costs change, you need to rethink it every year and make sure you're staying with what's the most important. And I know you're also trying to coordinate water and sewer projects with street projects, so you always want to make sure those are aligned, so you're doing the right thing and optimizing the dollars that you're spending. Monitoring and maintaining the utility rate models, which is what we've been doing, just trying to make sure everything is going smooth and stable, and then updating as much as you can, just keeping current with the rates based on the forecast that we put together. And then we like I said, smooth out the rates as much as possible so that we're not getting big spikes, swings up and down. This allows you to keep the cash where you need it, leverage any opportunities for grants, and then again, pay for emergencies out of cash rather than having to run to the bank in an emergency. So that's the strategy and the mission directive for this board to move forward. That's all I've got.
Any questions, discussion?
Yeah, the, on the sewer end, the plan with bonding and this that we're looking at, does that, is that fully funding the capital that we need to put into this?
The capital over the next six years is 4.1 million, and the bonding would be 4 million. So there's about 100,000 of cash that you could use to pay for some of that.
To factor in the obligation that our contracted customer has for improvements and maintenance and upkeep of the plant.
So if you're talking about the Bruce Township agreement?
Yeah, 2 or 23-ish percent that they're obligated.
We did not get into the detail on that, but we probably should. I started looking at that, but we could dive deeper into that and make sure the numbers that we have in there estimated for Bruce Township are really tight. That's a tricky number because again, if the cost changes, then the dollars change for Bruce Township as well, so we have to try to figure out how to make it dynamic.
Not so much the rates, they're an obligated percentage.
Right, they're a percentage.
Project costs a million, they're on the hook for 20, whatever, 23 point, whatever percent that is, so I mean, that should be pretty-
We should look at that more detailed, and yes, I would be happy to do that.
Yeah, because if we're, I mean, that could almost be a million dollars, right?
Yes.
Eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, and if we're putting that on the backs of the residents when they're contractually obligated to do that, why would we, why would we do that right now?
So, so the budgeting process has that in the process, and we did email back and forth about how much is being allocated to Bruce, we did go in and revise it a little bit, so- We did go in and revise it a little bit, so I can't say I got it down to the hundredth of a percent, but it's there. We are looking at how much of these costs, whether they're plant-related or collection system-related, and how much would be allocated to Bruce Township. So to answer your question, we're doing it. I would say we're not doing it at a super, super, super detailed level. It's more of a high-level rounded numbers. And then I think that's sufficient for what you need, but we are looking at what Bruce would contribute to these projects that are plant-related.
So then we're assuming, maybe I'm not understanding, if we're looking at 4.1 over the next so many years, we're assuming that their contribution is going to be needed on top of that?
No, that's, their contribution is, so what I've got is, I've got a worksheet that says, here's all the plant-related costs, here's Bruce Township's portion of that, and that's put into their revenue projections going forward, that the money that you'd be getting from the township.
Okay.
Distribution or collection system is not factored.
Okay.
So, so the full, the full 4 million is being paid by the village, but you're getting reimbursed partially by Bruce Township. So that, that's why we're able to go with a 5% increase and not an 8% increase because your customers aren't paying for all of it directly. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. I started out saying a little vague, but I wanted to be clear. Yes, we are looking at it, but again, not at the super detailed level of the exact hundredth of a percentage.
Well, and what you're proposing are two, is a four total, but two separate?
Yes.
Specifically sewer?
The sewer, yeah.
Yeah, so that, to your point, if we happen upon, hopefully, something that will help us out.
And I know you're pursuing funding, so I don't want to endet you if you don't need it.
Right. That's kind of where I was, we've spoken and going back and forth, and John knows that we're going after the congressional funding, but we won't know till possibly September if we are granted that or not. So it's this go-between of, okay, because this is, we can issue this debt, this bond at the table, I believe. This isn't a ballot question because this is paid back through the rates that we recapture. So we can do this, but I'm uncertain of the timing to do it because we have potential to offset this should we get these congressional funds. This will change, the need here will change dramatically. So I hate to go...
So I, I think what we're seeing is a worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
So if you do get congressional funding or other funding that pays for a portion of it, then we can go in and rework the numbers.
This will be adjusted, yeah.
But knowing what we know now and moving forward, knowing that you're going to have to issue debt and move forward on some of these projects next fiscal year, you need to get things lined up to do that.
So and then what I did put in here for everyone, just so we would have everything, the proposed rates for water, sewer, village, and industrial side, and then also, these are what I call, in the office, we have basic cheat sheets, the most used questions and items. So I have here for the 2024, and then I updated it, plugged in the 25 numbers, so you could see the differences between what it would look like if these 25 rates were adopted. Just for all of us to see and start mulling over as we come into the June meeting and make a decision at that time. Would it be, John, would it be too late to bond for the debt in the spring, waiting until we hear back?
It all depends on when you actually start spending money. So if we go back and look at, right now, you have a few hundred thousand dollars in the sewer fund that could pay for some engineering and preliminary work, but beyond that, you're going to have to bond to pay any, any actual contractual costs for construction.
So that's something that we're just, we need to take into consideration of, when do we want to move? Do we want to wait to see if we get an answer? Or do we want to take on some of it and continue to move together while we wait?
I, I think, I, do you have any sense of how realistic you are to get full approval for?
I feel very confident, however.
Okay.
You never know, things change. I mean, we saw how things were pulled off the table and put back on multiple times. Even last year's, I guess, congressional funds were kind of halted, so those people were a little nervous, and then we're already coming in with this year's request. I'm confident that we would get it. It's a two-community, it hits Romeo and Bruce, so I see that as a win-win to be able to help both communities and the health and this, you know, the sewers, sanitation and everything, but you never know.
So I will say, if you hear back from the congressional delegation that we're not sure, we won't know until March or April, or whatever the scenario is, if you decide to bond 2 million on the sewer side and you get the money, you can just do more projects. You have more projects to do at the wastewater treatment plant and on your collection system. So we're, we're working with what the plan is now, but I have been in other communities where they have gotten surprise money, and they just accelerate their capital improvement plan and move things forward. So that would be something, you might pull some of those projects that are out in later years and pull them forward. That would be another strategy. And it wouldn't require higher rates because you've already factored that debt in.
We have any more discussion while we have John here, because we probably won't have him here in due...
No, thank you.
Thank you.
I hope I didn't bore you.
No. Not at all.
We need to hear it. We know it.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
We need to have a, a good path to go down.
President Poznanski, I saw you included the service fees on the bottom of the page under the rates.
Mm-hmm.
Are those still sufficient to cover those costs that are happening because they're...
We'd have to reevaluate them. I don't... I could not answer that.
Can we maybe do that soon or at some point? Who, who would do that, I guess? Would that be the department or...
It'd be a couple different places. I'd have to, between Sarah, Tim, it'd be a few different people.
Okay.
To see the work that needs to be done there. Is it actually recouped? Does it cover it?
Okay. Maybe we could just add that to the to-do-someday list?
I mean, if it's three years old.
Sooner than later.
And, I mean, we can just follow the O and M costs from water and sewer and just increase them by how many years have gone by, 2.7 each year?
Yeah, because they were from 23.
If we know that they're, they were sufficient in 2023.
I don't know.
We just get numbers on new meters. We know the cost of new meter.
Should be pretty simple, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can look into it.
Okay, thanks.
We are now at our public comment. If you are here and you have public comment, you have three minutes. I'm thinking there isn't any. We're good, okay. Moving into our business, moving into our millage rates, you have your resolution here. It dives deeper than the, than the public hearing notice.
I, I did notice on page one, towards the bottom under millage levy.
Okay.
In that paragraph, the last sentence is the total number
Mm-hmm.
of 14.3767.
Mm-hmm.
But then when you get to the graph down below, it's 14.3476.
Is that a typo or is that intentional?
Looks like there's an extra seven.
Is that adding in the BTA budget?
No.
15.
Yeah, 3767 instead of 3476. On our notice.
So which one's right?
3476 is what's on the notice. Yeah. The lesser.
Yes.
Okay.
Good catch, I didn't see that.
Yeah, really.
And everything else is the same. So with that, do we have a motion to pass the millage rates as presented here?
I'll make a motion to approve the village rates as stated in the chart for 2025 to 2026 budget millage.
Support.
We have a motion by Edwards, support by Bartholomew. Do we have further discussion? Okay, Clerk Lucero, could you call the roll?
Yes.
Rosso.
Yes.
Edwards.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Bartholomew.
Yes.
President Poznanski.
Yes. Okay, moving into our second agenda item, fiscal year '25, '26, budget resolution.
Should we say motion carries, just so it's on your record?
The motion carries for the millage rates.
Because it's recording, isn't it?
Okay. For the budget resolution, again, taking our public hearing and then just breaks them down even further, more detailed. Do we have a motion to pass the budget resolution?
I'll make a motion to pass the 2025, 2026 budget resolution.
We have a motion by Edwards, support by Bartholomew. Do we have discussion?
On the first page, down towards the bottom under appropriations, the defined benefit pension plan had 600, and then it drops off to zero. Can, I, I just want to understand why it went from 600 to nothing.
Don't up, Danielle. We didn't have it in '23, '24. We didn't have it in our amended. It makes me think something just came in that needed a budget amendment and isn't needed further, but Danielle can let us know.
As long as we're not missing anything.
As always, the budget is a working, moving document. Whatever we pass today, we adjust. We go by, no longer by line item, but by category.
Okay, I'm in, which page was it, the budget resolution?
The first page.
Yeah, right on the cover.
Right in the front, down at the bottom where it says appropriations.
Well, she's not on the resolution, she's in the literal budget.
101, 717.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, you're in the budget document?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
It's okay. I thought we were in the presentation. Okay. Let me see. I'm on the first page, defined benefit plan, $600. So 101, 101, 717, oh, oh?
Yes.
That's because Catherine was in the pension system, or I'm sorry, it's council. Oh, that's, I believe that's Cindy. I think a little bit of her time kept charging here.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, if no other, could you please call the roll?
Parker.
No.
Bartholomew.
Yes.
Care.
Yes.
Rosso.
No.
Edwards.
Yes.
President Poznanski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Public comment, second public comment. Anything? No comments. Who would like to take the last motion? Zach isn't here.
Motion to adjourn. Support.
Motion by Bartholomew, support by Edwards, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed.